Thirty-two cents. We have receipts of four million, two hundred eighty-six thousand, eighteen dollars and seventeen cents, which brought our cash to five million, five hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. Less our expenditures of two million, four hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-six cents. And I did some transferring out of one million, three hundred thousand to other accounts. Uh, less our tax claim, which was twenty-seven thousand, sixty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents, which brought our cash balance to one million, eight hundred fourteen thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-five cents.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, subject to audit.
I'm not sure we audit this, but I'll second the motion.
Motion to second. Questions or comments? None? All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Close at the same time. Thank you. Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Good morning. Please introduce yourself for the record, and we may proceed.
Michelle Edger Sainley, Director of Human Resources. Under Personnel, Transactions, Resignations and Terminations, Tyler Brubaker, 911 Supervisor, Department of Emergency Services. Termination effective November seventeenth. Ritzabel Perez, Office Support Two/ Interpreter One, Domestic Relations, Resignation effective November twenty-first. Diane Little, DJ Office Support One, MDJ Golds Office, Retirement, effective January first, with last working day being January ninth. Timothy Ortiz, DJ Office Support One, MDJ Figueroa's Office, Termination effective November tenth.
Motion to second. Questions or comments? None? All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Close at the same time. And as for Resignations, Terminations.
Under Leaves of Absence, Ravati Minoshi, from Quartz Law Clerk, two-week, uh, two-day leave of absence, effective December eleventh, with an expected return date of December twenty-ninth. And James Hunt Sheriff's Office, thirteen working day, nineteen calendar day, all unpaid leave of absence, effective December twenty-third, expected return date of January twelfth.
I move to approve the Leaves of Absence as presented.
Motion to second. Questions, comments? None? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Close at the same time. And it's approved.
Changes to Status, Transfers and Promotion. Lysia Miranda, Promotion from Caseworker One and Children and Youth to Caseworker Two, at the rate of one thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-two cents by weekly, effective November twenty-third. Elizabeth Weant, Change of Status from Casual Part-Time Correctional Officer at the Lebanon County Correctional Facility to Full-Time Correctional Officer, at the rate of twenty-two dollars and seventy-one cents per hour, effective December twenty-first. Elia Ward, Promotion from Office Support Two and Probation Services to Probation Aid, at the rate of one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and sixty-two cents by weekly, effective November twenty-fourth. Brienne McKeesh, McKeesh, Promotion from Temporary Ball Clerk in the Public Defender's Office to Assistant Public Defender One, at the rate of two thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and five cents by weekly, effective October twenty-second.
Motion to second.
I thought I had an extra one on there.
No.
That's some...
Second.
Motion to second. Questions, comments? None? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Close at the same time. And that is approved.
Under Other Transactions, Area Agency on Aging would like to hire Bethany Brisinger-Pell as a part-time mail transporter, and three to twelve dollars and thirty-eight cents per hour, effective December first.
So moved.
Second. Motion to second. Questions? All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Close at the same time. And the transaction is approved.
Moving on to Salary Board. If there are no questions regarding the transactions presented, is there a motion to adopt these transactions onto the Salary Board?
So moved.
Motion to second. Questions or comments? None? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Close at the same time. And...
Yeah, Brienne McKeesh.
Oh, okay. The second box.
Oh.
That's right.
That's what she said.
It was to me, too. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I'll be right along.
Do you want me to move ahead? Because they're...
That's fine.
We're way ahead. Uh, I can try and do that. And then straight back in. I have, uh, two items.
Two?
Yeah. Uh, first is nominees for Lebanon Conservation District Director, appointment. Uh, we sought nominations from the eligible nominating organizations, which a list is provided to us from the state to solicit nominations. We received, uh, three of those back for the positions of Farmer Director and Public Director in, on the Conservation District. Uh, as you'll see in your packet, we received, uh, from Lebanon Valley Rail Trails, Calvin Miller, First Choice for Farmer Director, and Bob Arnold, First Choice for Public Director, from the Ag Preservation Board, uh, the same Calvin Miller, First Choice Farmer Director, Robert Miller. I'm sorry, Robert Miller, not Bob Arnold. I think that was supposed to be Robert Arnold. It's the same address. Bob Arnold.
Bob Arnold.
Bob Arnold's Ranch Avenue, Lebanon. You see, they're both the same. I think Farming and Preservations was... They put Miller down twice, but it was to be Arnold. And then the third one was from, uh, the Lebanon County Federation of Sportsman's Clubs, and they did not fill out the Farmer Director, but the Public Director was for Glenn Reinhardt of Anville. So, as you typically do, you take the sum. So you have two nominations for Calvin Miller, two for Bob Arnold, one for Glenn Reinhardt.
Make a motion to approve Calvin Miller and Bob Arnold.
I'll second the motion.
Motion to second. Questions or comments? Not all in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Mm-hmm.
Close at the same time. And approved.
Okay, I have a Hotel Tax Grant Fund application from Mount Gretna Summer Concerts. Uh, these would be, uh, obviously, summer of 2026. Uh, at the Tabernacle in Mount Gretna, they are seeking a five-thousand-dollar grant on a total project cost of six thousand, seven hundred dollars. They're seeking it to advertise the concerts, which are available to all parties on a pay-what-you-want basis, so that people of all economic means can attend. They advertise themselves as Pennsylvania's home for popular music. Uh, there is an enclosed, well, we probably enclosed it on the backside, but the letter of request lists all of their advertising expenses that make up that budget, uh, and talks about the, um, the visitation they get from various states. Uh, they have had a, uh, between seven hundred and twelve hundred people for their productions last year. Um, they have musicians coming from Philadelphia, New York, New Jersey, Lancaster, Harrisburg, Renning. They have, uh, people coming from a two-to-three-hour radius, as well as people who book their stays at nearby hotel rooms. So...
I don't think I got that one, but I've been to their concerts, and they're well, well-done, so I'll gladly make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I do support the five thousand.
You are or not?
Okay.
So we don't...
Was that a motion?
That was a motion, yes. But we're not... Second, so would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I heavily weighted all the advertising. A lot of it was, you know, from the local Lebanon Countyans, uh, and I thought that maybe doing fifty percent of their budget would be a good gesture on our part, so I'm putting up three thousand, uh, three hundred and fifty dollars.
So there's a motion for three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars to allocate to that request. And so a second.
Well, I'm not going to deny them everything, so I will support it. I, um...
Joe, you didn't even review it.
Pardon?
You didn't even review it.
I didn't get it.
I'm saying, so how are you making these, you know?
Because I have been to the concerts, and I understand how well-done they are.
I'm not testing the, uh, quality of the music. I'm just suggesting that they're asking for five thousand. I think, uh, under the budget, the way I read it, that it should be, uh, you know, carved out a little bit.
I'm not arguing. I'm going to support it, sir. I don't know what you're arguing about.
Before we continue any discussion, is there a second for that motion?
Yes, I seconded it.
Okay, well, should I just...
And now...
procedurally, she had a motion.
That, uh, that motion died for like a second.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Yes.
Okay. I thought he was amending that motion, but it died for... Okay, then I didn't catch that part. Thank you.
I did not say that, sir, but thank you for correcting. So we have a motion and a second for, now we come out, it's thirty...
Three thousand, three hundred and fifty.
Three thousand, three hundred and fifty.
Yes, so just half of the total budget. Any discussion, further discussion on the matter? Not all in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Close at the same time. I got that, some analysis.
Okay. Apologize.
Got that, Jamie?
I, I got it now. I didn't hear if it was an amendment or died for a second, sorry. Then I have, uh, the Disabled Veteran Exemptions, just one, uh, this time. They are Lev Stowe of Fieldstone Drive, Anville.
I'll make a motion to approve the Disabled Veteran Exemption.
Second the motion. Motion to second. Questions or comments? None? All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Close at the same time. And that is approved.
Everything else, uh, is for, uh, the LVRT, unless you also want to do MATS, please.
America two fifty, did we give it?
Want to use this time, uh, and our acting treasurer reported that our cash flow seems a little better. You want to report on budget update and how that's going to impact and our timing to present the final decision?
Uh, so the timing for the budget is, uh, December fourth. The, um, so I'll need to have everything kind of buttoned up by the, before Thanksgiving, since we're now, uh, we're closed on Friday after, and, Angel, we'll have to put it all into the packets and so on. So really, by next Wednesday, I need to have everything, every question answered, I guess. Uh, we, we have begun to see the, some of the state money flow back in. Tina's doing a good job of shepherding that or dogging that every single day to see what's, what's coming in and flowing back. So, uh, if, if the decision to balance the budget with existing reserves on hand is, is the decision or is the direction we might go, the, the funding is back in. If you remember, two weeks ago, I talked about cash on hand. Uh, I can't balance this cash we don't have, and we have used up that cash, uh, at least the, at least the, uh, the set asides for 2026. We were about to be out of that sometime early December, but that's back in again. So there's cash back there that we can rely on to balance if that's...
Excuse me. When you say the cash is back in there, did we get that from the state?
Some of it's state, some of it's interest that we, that we moved over. Yes, we didn't get it all back yet, but we got three million, maybe.
How much?
About three million so far. Um, but it's, it's evident that it's, you know, the transfers are moving, so I would expect there'd be maybe even more this weekend, definitely some next week. So, uh, by the time the budget comes around, I believe we'll... We're okay now, but even then, by the time the budget comes, we should be back to where we were, in terms of what we're owed. Um, so that is an option that's back on the table again. I had, I think I had mentioned that if, you know, if that cash wasn't there, then it may have been necessary to do some millage just to put the cash, to have the cash on hand or had, or to have it balanced, but, but we're okay there. As far as the budget itself, there's still some, some personnel items, uh, pending and, um, and, uh, possibly some vacancies, but not the kinds of, not the kinds of vacancy cuts that we made in past years, because we're just seeing a little bit more retention, um, recruitment, and I think that has to do with the job market has shifted a bit. Seems the great resignation is, is now long over, and we're able to keep some people. We're doing well in prison, um, Sheriff's Department, um, some of the other, some of the larger places. We're still struggling at Redova, but I think that has to more to do with, with the industry in healthcare than it does with, with anything else. So, um, to make adjustments there, uh, is going to be, is going to be difficult, more difficult than it was over the years. So I do think we're gonna, we're, we're still gonna end up somewhere between a four and five million dollar gap, and how you choose to fill that is, is, is key, is the key, is the decision. So...
Would you like for the lower vacancy rate?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you, you know, it was, it was easy...
We worked toward it.
Yes, that's what we worked toward. It was, it was, uh, easy to cut those things, knowing that the reality was that we weren't going to fill those, and so we didn't have the budget for them, but now we're in a different position, and that's fine. We need those to fill. So, uh, hopefully that's what you're looking for, but yeah, we've got, uh, a few more days yet here to work on it for, for Thanksgiving.
Would it be, would it be asking Tina too much to give us a weekly update of the money returned from the state and, you know, how much we're owed and what we're waiting on? It would really be helpful.
Well, you, in your, well, I have a, I have a ground here, but your treasurer's report... The, like, third last page, it always, it's always included. It has your, it has the reserves on it, and you'll see at the bottom, um, the zeros, which used to be millions, uh, the zeros were what we used up for the state to fill, to backfill what the state would have, would have given us otherwise. And on the right side, then it tells how much and when it was used. So, so then the next, uh...
Can, can I see that, Jamie? Thank you. It doesn't, oh, yes, it does say...
She, she just, she just, this morning, gave to me another printout, which includes, since that was printed, which includes the, the monies that came back in, so...
Oh.
Pass those down if you want to see them. But basically, what I just described is now shown on that page.
Okay, this has the amounts.
Yeah, and you can see what they cover then if you look at the dates in the third column.
Okay, April.
April, January, April, February.
All right. Is this...
You can have that.
Can I? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Matt Fieldley, Lebanon County Solicitor. I have one item, uh, for the board's consideration this morning. This is a lease agreement, uh, between the county and the borough of Cleona, uh, relative to space, which is utilized by District Court Fifty-two dash three dash zero four. This is Judge Ditzler's office. Uh, the terms are substantially the same as, uh, previous lease agreements that we've had over the years. We have leased that space for, uh, the use of Judge Ditzler's office for quite some time. Uh, one of the differences, however, is this is a longer term. This is a four-year term. It begins, uh, January one, two thousand twenty-six, and it goes, uh, through, uh, two thousand twenty-nine. Uh, the, the rent increases, uh, in increments of twenty-five dollars each year. Uh, after the first year, it'll, the first year, the rent will be one thousand, one hundred twenty-five. It'll increase then twenty-five dollars each year thereafter. I do want to note that the, uh, there is a typo for year two, uh, in the, the, um, contract that was put, uh, in, in your packets. That amount should be one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, not eleven thousand, five hundred dollars per month. So I just wanted to clarify that, and I made the correction on the version, uh, that the board will sign, to the same as what we have had, uh, in previous years, uh, and the, the county still has the burden of, um, providing certain renovations and also, uh, certain, um, furniture, things of that sort.
They, they did want a, if you recall, they wanted a one-year. This was, would have been renewed for a longer term last year. But Cleona wanted just a one-year, I guess, to explore options on what they may do, and so they've obviously decided to keep us.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Questions, comments? None? All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Close at the same time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's all right.
Thank you.
Hold microphone over closer to you a little bit, and if you would, please introduce yourself for the record, and, uh, you may proceed.
Thank you, Commissioner Coon. Uh, good morning, commissioners and, and everyone who is here. I'm Tom Cote. I'm a rail trail board member, and we're here today to talk to you about three different things. One is a grant application request, and we have two grant approval letters that need to be signed by you and extend those grants that we have already in place. Let me provide some things to the media. Can we first talk about the Phase Six D? That's our current grant application that we're working on. I believe, commissioners, you have a packet that I've provided to you, hopefully?
Unfortunately, my materials are, uh, not available, and, um, so therefore, I did not. Thank you.
Always helps to bring one or two extra copies. I happen to lose things all the time, but, uh, the grant request is for Phase Six D. This is the right-of-way through the Lebanon Valley Mall property. Uh, this is the last remaining unfinished section of the rail trail in the urbanized area, in the urbanized area. Really exciting for us to get to this milestone, uh, so we're submitting a grant application to, uh, DCED. Uh, the, uh, the rail trail is going to be, uh, using exclusively, again, mall property. Mall's very comfortable with this. We have a long-term linear easement in place. It's been filed here at the courthouse. That was done earlier in the year. They actually approved the final design of the, uh, Phase Six D in a letter to us a few months ago, so we're moving forward. Preliminary engineering for this phase, environmental clearance is underway. We have the funds set aside, thanks to you and, uh, LVRT Inc., to do final design. So we're going to be doing final design concurrently, as this application is being reviewed and hopefully approved, hopefully approved sometime next year, sometime late next year. So we're really excited about that. Uh, the rail trail, I think, as you know, is gaining momentum, and we're getting very close to completion, uh, but, uh, the end dates and start dates for this project will be, uh, we'll start work potentially April of twenty twenty-seven, and complete the work by the end of the calendar year, or, excuse me, by the end of July, by the end of July.
Of twenty twenty-seven.
Very short project, very short project to do and very easy to, to take care of. Uh, it's basically removing some few parking spaces, a few obstacles in the way, milling and paving and, and things like that. And again, the mall is very excited about this because they want to design to go right through the mall. They're going to put up some designations that encourage people that are walkers to go right through the mall, because I guess they hopefully shop and, and buy something along the way. But, uh, this is really exciting. If you think where we've come from, eight or ten years ago, when we were arguing with Norfolk Southern about an alignment, and it all fell through, and now we've got a more perfect alignment that gets more people through the Johnny Wayman Memorial Park, along Chestnut Street, onto Twenty-Second Street, and then into the mall. It's just a much better alignment for everyone, safer, more convenient, uh, so we're really excited about this. The grant application is for seven hundred, eleven thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars. That would all be DCED statewide, uh, local share account funds, and those LSA funds come from gambling. Those are proceeds that come from gambling that are kept statewide and then designated to the various areas where there are gambling establishments or into a statewide account, and we're applying into the statewide account for these funds.
Could you, could you describe the path?
Yeah, you have, you actually have a detachment, if you take a look at that, uh...
But if you're, you know, if you're familiar with the mall and, uh...
Yep. If you look at Sheet One, okay, if you look at Sheet One, I can see where US four twenty-two and the mall entrance, uh, uh, is. Uh, we're going to be doing some pavement work there along the sidewalk and along the roadway. The, the rail trail will hug the west side of that entrance roadway, come to the point where that first internal major roadway is, and then work its way over to a central location where pedestrians in those green dots will enter the building if they choose to do so. If you don't choose to do so, the rest of the riders or users of the rail trail will wrap around the east side of the property. The east side of the property, put at the back of the mall property, and then work their way over to Twenty-Fifth Street at the underpass, and there, we're going to be putting up all-new traffic control equipment, uh, push-button equipment, so pedestrians and bicycles will have their own phase to go under the tunnel, under that one-way tunnel.
Well, you mentioned bicycles. May I ask, are they allowed to push their bicycles through the mall? Or must they go around if they're on bicycle?
Well, that's a good question, Joe, and we have not heard that. I can ask.
Okay, I'm, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't know.
People are going to ask me that.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Or they may ask us that as well. I'll find that out.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. But that's the alignment of the rail trail, uh, through the, the central entranceway, uh, to the center of the mall, uh, entrance to the building, or around to the east and backside of the buildings, and then tying into Twenty-Fifth Street, underpass. Okay? And we need today an approval by you to sign a resolution and to seal the resolution, uh, and then that'll be attached to the application, and I think, Jamie, you should have it. I think I gave you one original and two copies.
Okay, yes.
Okay, you don't need the copies if you, if you have the original. But I would need that approval today from, from the commissioners, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, plan as presented, and, um, the, the total amount again was...
For the grant, seven hundred, eleven thousand, three eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I just want to be clear that, uh, this, once the extension request for Phase Six, that...
What, do you want to do all, all those in one?
I didn't know if you're...
No, just this one.
Just this one, if you don't mind. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, motion to second. Is there any questions? Not all in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Close at the same time. You have that approval?
Thank you, Mr....
Mr....
Yeah, as Commissioner Phillips, uh, said, we have two grant extension letters we need your approval of. Uh, the first one is for the rail trail grant for Phase Six. When we originally received that grant, it is to be used for design and approval of the first section of the rail trail that went through the Johnny Wayman Memorial Park. As we got into that, DCNR said to us, why don't you use all those funds to design the project? So we changed the scope of work to development or design, and as you can see, we're talking today, we're still not completed with Phase Six C on Twenty-Second Street or Six D, so we need an extension letter for one year, signed by you folks, that goes from twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, to twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. I think John Fiski drafted a letter for your signature, commissioners, and maybe Jamie has it in front of her.
I, I just need a little bit more clarification. Six C is Twenty-Fifth Street?
Twenty-Second.
Twenty-Second Street.
Yeah, that's the section that will go to construction next year. That's fully funded.
And Six D is...
Through the mall.
Through the mall, okay.
Six D is through the mall, correct, Commissioner.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Oh, you're very welcome.
I'll, I'll gladly make a motion to approve those two.
I'll second, gladly second the motion.
Motion to second. Are there questions or comments? Not all in favor?
Just quickly, uh, so Tom, just a couple things. One, I see on this design, it shows one bike rack. So if you're encouraging people now, Grant, maybe you don't have, you know, hundreds of people come in the mall all at one time. I always see one bike rack, one, uh, so I guess...
And that's intentional, because the mall only wanted us to install one bike rack.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you're putting a pedestrian trail. The trail will go through the mall.
Oh, you betcha.
For foot traffic.
You betcha.
And then will 6C and this 6D both be completed at the same time? When you talk about 6D being the final part of a piece of other for the urban part of the rail trail? Are they happening concurrently? Or will, like, what is the timeline for 6C versus 6D being completed?
That's a really good question. They're going to be staged. 6C will go under construction next year and be finished in 2027. It's a long project because if you remember, that's a road relocation, a new bridge, lots of facility changes at 22nd Street and 422 and 22nd and the southern end of the project, a lot of work to be done. So that's a long project that will be done starting in 2027. This work will start for Phase 6D if we get the grant application right at the very end of that project. When 6C concludes, 6D will start work.
So 6C is start and finish in 2027 or?
Start in 2026.
20, 6C will start, okay.
Yeah, it's about an 18-month project.
And in like spring, summer, fall for 6C?
Oh, beginning of spring, spring of 26. That is correct.
And then how long will 6D take?
Only a few months. That's going to be the April through July timeframe. This is a real foot project. 6D is a very, very fast project.
Okay.
Okay?
So C starts next spring.
Yep.
Takes its way through mid-27.
Yep.
C starts in 27, but probably will finish up the same, about the same time C and D.
Up to July.
Could very well be. If weather and conditions, you know, are favorable, it'll happen.
Wanted to kind of blend them together.
Yep.
They're going in, in Alpenway, I guess.
Yeah, they are.
Tom, just kind of general comment. What does that really mean for everyone involved with the rail trail to have the urban section of finally completed?
Yeah, it really means that we're really going to be focusing, you know, on not just recreational opportunities, but destination and trip making. You know, if you look at that section of the rail trail now, Phase 6A, B, and C, you'll just see how many pedestrians and folks use the trail to get to key destinations along 422. So it's really important for us to provide access and safety and security, you know, for the residents, you know, of our area. Obviously, tourists and visitors will use this section of the trail too. But it's really important for the residents that they get this accommodation. It really is, okay? And the second grant extension request letter is for Phase 10A and B. Now we're out north of Jonestown. Phase 10A is currently under construction. That's the section from US Route 22 to Pine Tree Road. That's under construction right now. And then 10B will go from Pine Tree Road all the way out to Lickdale Road into the entrance to the KOA Camp Road. But boy, a lot keeps moving out there with that project. There's some new ownership. We have some new easements to acquire. There's been some delays in DEP permitting and trying to sort out what the permits need to be. So with easements and design and soil testing and a whole variety of things, we need to request a time extension for two years for Phases 10A and 10B. That would go from 1220, excuse me, 1231, 2025 to 1231, 2027. So that's a two-year.
Say those numbers again.
It'll go from 1231, 2025.
December.
From December of this year to late December of 2027.
Thank you.
I love the request for the extension as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second. Questions or comments?
Where is Pine Tree Road?
Remember where the old state police barracks used to be?
Yeah.
On 72? The road just north of there is Pine Tree Road.
Goes east?
Goes east. Really windy, curvy road.
At Bunker Hill?
No, way, way north of Bunker Hill.
At the barr, at the old barracks?
Oh.
Like where Miller's Restaurant is, that area.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, at Tim Miller's Restaurant.
You turn right and now Pine Tree Road. And like you said, it takes a couple of wines and then it's in the woods to the right. You don't see it from the.
I do, I knew, I do know. Well, no, I know where it goes out, Bunker Hill. I can't imagine it at the moment, but that's okay.
Yeah, it's a track back to where it is.
Yeah, it is, yep.
So this is an extension of an already approved?
Grant.
Okay.
Both of these are DCNR grants, yep.
Thank you, Tom.
You're very welcome. Have fun here.
And a second, any additional questions or comments? Favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
On the same side, you have that approval.
Thank you, Jamie. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
My favorite time of the year.
Thank you and everybody involved in the rail trail grant for your perseverance and dedication all the time and what it's truly an asset for Levitt County.
It's a pleasure for us to work with you and Jamie and others on this.
Any chance that's an extra copy you could leave with me, your packet?
Yeah. Will you give the right things to the? That's another complete package.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. This one I got. Thought he had more.
Good morning, ladies. Make yourselves comfortable and whoever wants to kick it off and introduce yourselves for the record and then you may proceed.
Thank you for having us this morning. My name is Brett Holland with Stifel Financial. And my business partner, Mike Battistelli with Stifel as well. And then today we're honored to have Brian Payne, he's a director with Dearborn Investments. Dearborn's, we were just actually chatting out there for a minute or two that the relationship's about seven or eight years and he's been, his organization has been working with the county. So they've served us well and continue to do so. So he's with us this morning. He's going to give an update. And their focus is more on dividends, type of those types of equities. So he'll go through that in a few minutes. So if I could ask you, if you turn to page four, which is kind of where we'll get started, the same report that we typically go through with you all. And on page four, again, this report, just always like to remind you, is for the last full calendar quarter. So it's for July, August, and September. And the top left-hand area is kind of where we'll be focusing at. The current period, which would again be for the quarter, at the beginning value of the third quarter, the balance for the pension was $141,972,566. And then the number underneath that, the negative number, that's cash flow distributions of 2.7 million to pay folks that are retired. And then the return during that time was a little over $5 million in positive return. And then the ending value was $144,360,000, excuse me, $360,549. And underneath that is the return for the period for the third quarter of 3.61%. And then the column to the right is just a year-to-date number. So January 1st through September 30th, with the balance beginning at $138 million at the beginning of the year and then ending again at $144 million with about $5 million worth of withdrawals for retirees, about $10 million of appreciation, and then a return, a year-to-date return of a little over 8%, 8.05%. And then on the bottom right-hand area is just your overall allocation of pie chart that we like to mention. And Mike's going to talk a little bit about the cash equivalents that we have there. This list is about 1%, but he's going to touch base on that a little bit more so. But as we move clockwise, the equity or the stock portion is about 66%. Fixed income is 28%. And the alternative investments, which is again the REIT portfolio, is about 5%. Allocation, we use withdrawals at times to kind of keep things allocated. So sometimes if we're getting a little heavier in one area when we're making withdrawals for the retirees, that's kind of the way that does kind of maintain its balance. And then there have been times when we've rebalanced things a little bit after presenting to you all, to you folks. Dearborn over there on the left-hand side is the fourth one listed down there. They have about $17.9 million, about 12, 12 and 1/2% of the total. So any questions on any of that at all? And then if I could ask you just to go to page six. So page six of 11 has a little longer perspective, which again kind of comes into play for planning purposes. On page six of 11, again, over on the kind of the right-hand side of the page, you'll see some of the time periods of 1, 3, 5, and 10 years. And if you drop to the bottom of those columns, and I think probably the 10-year number is the one that oftentimes they're focused on for actuarial numbers and so on. And the 10-year column, if you go to the bottom, over the last 10 years through the end of the third quarter, the pension account has averaged 7.88% during that timeframe. So any questions at all with any of that? And then Mike has a little bit more up-to-date numbers with allocation and things like that.
So Brett gets to present the good news. Unfortunately, since the end of September, the markets have been a little more volatile. You guys have probably seen that and noticed that. So performance is down a little bit from that third quarter end. So we are at, again, unaudited. We are positive 6.26% at this point through yesterday's close with a balance of $140,613,456. Allocation is really identical to third quarter end. And we're not really recommending any changes to that allocation. It's still within the investment policy statement. I think we're positioned fairly well. I will point out, we do have enough cash on hand for the next four months of distributions for the retirees. And we're always looking for opportunities to raise more cash when it presents itself. So that opportunity would be if we get a bounce in the market, taking some of that growth, that gain, and moving it to cash for future cash flow. But for now, I think we have enough in cash.
They're not talking about it though.
Pardon?
They're not talking about a bump.
We're not, but you know, last night Nvidia had a really good earnings report. And that's kind of carried the market this morning. When we were sitting out there, the Dow Jones was up 600 points. So you don't really know what might be the next, you know, the catalyst. Earnings is a big deal. Brian's going to certainly talk on earnings and how that relates to Dearborn. But when we have those positive earnings reports, it can really affect how the market's performing and give the markets some confidence that things are in position. So we don't know that.
Yeah.
I know that the commentary maybe has not been as, have as much confidence. But again, you get a good earnings report and it can change things pretty quickly from that standpoint.
Excuse me, I just want to say that 10-year number is awesome.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, because with the 7.25 being that goal, that's really, that's a good block of time. We're not going day by day. The only other number I can give you for is the 1231, 32.
Yeah, I'll help you out with your budget and guess.
You all putting in your dollars though too and making the payments into the pension. It's a, it's a team effort, you know? So that's an important part too that you all have been very consistent doing.
Maybe you can tell somebody at Nvidia to do a little report of 30th of December.
Pre-report, right? Pre-earnings report. The only thing I'm going to want to just comment on briefly, and Brian's going to probably add a lot more color to this, but you know, technology, AI has really been what's moving the market. And we've been talking with clients a lot about possible pullback in the market or repricing of stocks. Not a crash or anything, but it's pretty common to have those every 12 to 18 months. And we really haven't had a meaningful one here for a while. And what's been leading the market has been technology. I think we all agree with that. Your portfolio, the way it's put together currently, has about 24% of equity holdings in technology. That compares to the S&amp;P, has about 35%. So we think it's important to have that exposure, but we're not fully in line with the S&amp;P. And that's intentional because if we do get a pullback, I think it's likely and reasonable to think that technology will probably lead that pullback more. So we're positioned in case that does happen. But I don't, I don't always talk about that kind of detail in the portfolio, but I thought it was important because technology is moving the market and then move it up and potentially down. Any questions or comments? I'll turn it over to Brian.
Thank you. And thank you is certainly the way to lead what I'd like to share today. It's the seventh year of our relationship. It's the fourth time I've had the privilege of visiting with all of you. So great to see friendly, familiar faces. And thank you for your trust in Dearborn Partners Rising Dividend Strategy. And my name's Brian Payne, I'm a regional director for Dearborn Partner and Firm, based out of Chicago, Dearborn, Chicago headquarters. I've got a piece here, enough of them for the Commissioners, if that's okay. And pass that out. It's an overview of the firm, our investment team, and our rising dividend investment strategy that you trusted some of the pension assets to. I think it's always good to refresh, you know, the health of your partners and the people behind making the very important decisions that you're trusting your pension assets to. So we'll just spend just a couple minutes refreshing that overview. But again, most of all, thank you for your ongoing trust. And it's always come to come back and visit with my friends here. So we'll start just on the opening page about Dearborn Partners. And we're now a 28-year-old firm, entirely independent, owned by active partners in the firm. Just like the high-quality companies we aim to invest your assets in. We have no debt. And again, we're entirely independent, focused on doing one thing and one thing only. And that's identifying high-quality public equities that pay dividends and we believe can grow those dividends in mid to upper single-digit annual terms. So we want that income stream being generated from the equities that we own on your behalf to grow at 7, 8, 9% a year. And thankfully, and Robert, I love how you mentioned 10-year returns. We think about the world and big time horizons, 10 years being probably one of the most important chunks of time. Not 10 days or 10 months, but 10 years. And thankfully, you know, our returns over the past 10 years have been strong, hopefully helping to support the returns you've had overall of the pension. And so has that dividend growth rate, which we focus on with paramount importance. It doesn't get a lot of headlines. CNBC is not going to have breaking news about an 8% dividend increase from Costco. But that's what gets us excited because we know over long periods of time, that quality, that dependability in both earnings growth and dividend income growth, that provides stability in tough markets, which I think is most important for long-term investors and helps us keep up nicely in up markets. We're not going to overtake Nvidia when Nvidia's on us. You want to toss in the hair analogy, when the hair isn't a full sprint, we'll chug along. But eventually, the hair needs to take a rest and we'll be there churning out 8% dividend increases in earnings. And I think that's the way we aim to serve our partners. So thank you for being a partner of us in that long-term journey. So the firm is healthy and strong overall, and our rising dividend portfolio is about $11 billion. Trusted to that strategy. The second page, what we look for in the portfolio companies we invest in. You know, it has to start with a dividend. Every company we own has to pay a dividend of not just a nominal amount, but right around 1% at a minimum. It's not a hard threshold, but it needs to be substantial enough to know there's some income coming in. But the look-through of the dividend is most important to that next piece of the quote, where a dividend is a tangible evidence of a company's health after you've achieved a certain level of profitability to be able to just have so much money, you are going to return some to your shareholders. But the rising dividend aspect, that ability for a company to grow its dividend 7, 8, 9% a year, that's a real tell of a company's strength. And so when economies and markets inevitably, we know challenging times are just part of life in the economy and the market, inevitably that strength of that growing. in the economy and the market, inevitably that strength of that growing dividend will provide typically a nice buoy to those investments in those periods of challenge. And I think especially for a pension, trying to match commitments, you know, to navigate those challenging times through those full-market cycles, that's one of the other main benefits we aim to provide to you. And thankfully, thankfully on two fronts. One, we haven't had many opportunities in the last 10 years to prove our metal to the downside. There haven't been many downturns. 2022 was a down year in the market and the first quarter of this year. And in both periods, we provided some very nice relative strength in those challenging times. And then finally, just as an overview and an update, and there's other information and data here about our strategy, but for now, in the interest of time, we'll just summarize with a look at our investment team. Our Brady Bunch slide there, page number four. The team, just like the firm, is healthy and strong. Carol, Mike, and Peter are our three co-portfolio managers. Both Mike and Pete have been here alongside me during prior visits to present to you. And they both said to say hello and thank you. And then Matt and John are two CFA analysts dedicated to serving just Carol, Mike, and Pete, help identify great Rising Dividend companies. So the team is healthy and strong. The team's been in place now for almost 10 years together. Strategy's been at Dearborn for 14. And, you know, even though our style of investing hasn't been what's leading the market over these last specifically seven months, you know, with, as Mike mentioned so well, technology mostly driven by the AI theme has led the market for the last seven months. We've been producing 9.4% dividend income growth so far this year. I would say that might not be, in our view, appropriately valued by the market this year, but our goal, next year as it is every year, return, identify companies that are going to grow their earnings and their dividends by 8, 9, 10%. We feel confident in that number for next year. And there's even a part in the appendix here where these strong technology companies, if you want to turn to that last page, just inside the last page on the deck, where it always comes back to earnings, as Mike said, that's what stock prices follow. That you can see for 2023, 24, 25, the difference between the largest technology companies and the rest of the market, the magnificent seven and the S and P 493, the gap in earnings for those two cohorts is closing. And next year, the forecast is for those two cohorts' earnings to be about in par. So, you know, we like where we sit. We know we're, you know, in it for the long run. Price, you know, stock investing eventually always comes back to earnings. What do you actually produce in earnings and dividend income, dividend growth? And our investment team's really confident in what, you know, this year has been, we've been able to produce and what is in store for next year, too. Thank you for your trust and it seems to be a good outcome. Please, any questions? Happy to field.
Keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate all you're doing for us.
All of us, thank you.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
You too.
Commissioner, back to you. Did you have 250?
Yeah, some of those are from a prior agenda. We're doing our best here with Don's absence. Some things are a little mistaken. Anyway.
No one might, anything else for the good of the order? Not one. Attention, obtain a motion adjourned and note that we will be meeting in executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn.